Good morning. My name is Lucille Songhai from the MTA. I will serve as this morning's hearing officer for this virtual public hearing, the eighth and final virtual hearing, including two satellite hearings, to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes in MTA fares and tolls affecting transportation on MTA subways, buses, commuter railroads, bridges and tunnels, and the Staten Island Railway. To make the public aware of these hearings, advertisements were published in 13 print media outlets, including multilingual outlets throughout the region. Notice of these hearings were also published in press releases and posted on the MTA website along with multilingual signs and digital displays in stations, buses, and trains. The MTA also provided notice of the hearings on social media. The MTA's fare and toll hearing website, describes these proposals in detail. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we are conducting this meeting virtually via Zoom's online platform and conference call feature with a live stream available on the MTA fare and toll hearing website. Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.76, which has subsequently been extended, permits the MTA to conduct these fare and toll hearings remotely. This hearing is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment on the proposals. Members of the MTA Board of Directors and senior staff are here to listen. So board members will be listening and not commenting. MTA's subject matter experts are available to answer your questions in the Zoom Q&amp;A function this morning. The Q&amp;A function is available only if you are logged into the Zoom webinar online, and it is located on the lower portion of your Zoom window. If you are attending via Zoom online, type your question into the Q&amp;A function, and a subject matter expert will answer your question if it is deemed to pertain to the subject of this hearing. In addition to the virtual hearings, there have been several other ways you can provide comments, ask questions, or make requests throughout this process. Please note that the comment period closes today, December 21, 2020. If you are planning to comment today, we encourage the public to comment via the fare and toll hearing website, or call the public hearing hotline at 646-252-6777. Telephone agents are available from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. We have also been accepting comments mailed to MTA Government and Community Relations regarding fare and crossing charges, virtual public hearing to Broadway, New York, New York, 10004. And I should emphasize that every bit of public comment, including spoken comments today and at other hearings, all correspondence, emails, phone calls, and comments will be transcribed and incorporated into the official record and provided to all the board members so that they can review them prior to final consideration of the fare and toll proposal. For the record, today's date is December 21, 2020. The time is 10:06 a.m. Now, let me briefly describe the procedure for today's hearing. I will call the names of people who have registered to speak in the order in which they are registered. The one exception here is that if you have already spoken at a virtual public hearing during this round of hearings, you will be moved to the end of the queue after all registrants who have not spoken at a previous virtual public hearing have had an opportunity to speak. We opened registration for today's hearing on Monday, November 23, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., and registration closed at 5:00 p.m. yesterday. We will remain here until all registered speakers are heard. All participants will be muted upon joining the Zoom webinar. When your name is called, please enable your camera and microphone by clicking the camera by turning, by clicking the camera and microphone icons on the bottom of your Zoom screen. We will give you 10 seconds to turn your camera and microphone on before moving on to the next speaker. In the event your name is called and you are not present, we will read your name again in the order it was initially called at the end of the list of pre-registered speakers. We will close the proceedings 15 minutes after the last name is called once we exhaust the list of speakers. When you begin speaking, please provide us your name and any affiliation you wish to announce so that we have it for the record. And this is important so that we can be fair to all speakers. We ask that you keep your remarks to our limit of two minutes. The clock on the screen will indicate how much time you have remaining, and a warning light and beep will remind you that you have 30 seconds left to conclude your remarks. If you run out of time, remember you can submit complete written testimony to supplement your oral testimony. CART captioning and American Sign Language interpreters are available at this hearing. Thank you for listening to all of that. And now let me introduce the MTA Board of Directors and senior executive staff that are here with us today. From the MTA Board, we have commissioners Albert Borelli, Brown, Calisi, Fleischer, Glucksman, Herman, Jones, and Law, Lynn Intessitore. MTA leadership is represented this morning by Chairman Patrick Foy, President Sarah Feinberg, President Craig Cipriano, President Danny DiCrescenzo, President Kathy Rinaldi, and President Phil Eng. I will now turn it over to MTA Chairman and CEO Pat Foy for opening remarks.
Thank you, Lucille. Thank you all for joining us this morning and share your comments as part of the MTA standard biennial review of fare and toll policy. We recognize that this year is anything but standard. The pandemic has affected and impacted all of us in profound and lasting ways, which makes this biennial process this year more complex and challenging. Since 2011, the MTA has implemented fare adjustments roughly every two years, and a proposed change to fares and tolls with a 4% revenue yield equal to 2% a year has previously been included in next year's and the following year's MTA budgets. To be clear, the current fare proposals are not intended to address our current financial crisis caused by COVID-19. Our goal in the fare and toll adjustments is to minimize impact on New Yorkers in these difficult times. Still, we know that any increase will affect New Yorkers, especially those in communities who depend on the MTA most. It's clear that this is one of the most uncertain and challenging times ever, not just for the MTA, but for all of us. As a result of COVID-19, the MTA is facing the worst financial crisis in its history, far exceeding anything we've ever dealt with in the past, even the Great Depression. Because of precipitous declines in ridership and revenues, the MTA is facing significant projected deficits over the next few years. We have aggressively sought additional emergency aid from the federal government to fill our budget gaps and are relieved and grateful to Congress for progress on the coronavirus relief bill, which is nearing a vote. Importantly, the bill includes $4 billion for the MTA, which will help address a significant portion of our deficit for 2021 and will allow us to get through next year without devastating service cuts and layoffs, though the agency continues to face significant deficits aggregating $8 billion in the years ahead. I want to acknowledge the extraordinary work of Senate Majority Leader Schumer on obtaining MTA funding in the COVID relief bill together with the New York Congressional delegation on a bipartisan basis led by Chairman Loewy. We hope any future bills will include enough support for what the transit industry and particularly the MTA needs and fully offset the impact of the pandemic, since there can be no recovery in New York or nationally without a strong public transportation system. We appreciate you taking the time to make your voices heard on these proposals. This is a tough time for all New Yorkers, and we remain dedicated to keeping this region moving as our employees have done heroically this entire year. The MTA remains on high alert and will do everything we can to minimize the health risk to our customers and our employees as we continue navigating through these uncharted waters. We look forward to hearing from you all today. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Chairman Foy. This morning, we have 70 registered speakers. As a reminder, if you have joined the Zoom under a name that is not what you have registered to speak under, please identify yourself with the name used for registration in the Q&amp;A function. When your name is called, there will be a brief transition to allow you to turn on your camera and unmute your microphone. We will now call our first public speaker of the morning. Our first speaker is Assembly Member Charles Fall, followed by Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Assembly Member. Please begin.
Very good. Good morning, good morning, Mr. Chairman, the entire board. First, I want to start out by acknowledging the transit workers during this period who have kept our city moving and running and also keep our thoughts and prayers with those that have, you know, for the transit workers that we have lost during this time. I understand that there is a proposal to, of course, eliminate the Staten Island discount, and I'm here to say I do not support it. You know, Staten Islanders are hurting during this time, and I also understand that the MTA has some tough decisions to make. But I do want you folks to know that, you know, there is only one bridge that connects Staten Island to the rest of the city, and that's the Verrazano Bridge. And I strongly encourage you guys to please consider not removing the Staten Island discount because Staten Islanders heavily rely on that. And of course, you know, this is a transit desert, so, you know, the increase in fares will hurt us. And, you know, I just want to encourage you guys, please, please, please take that into consideration before coming to a final decision. Thank you again for allowing me, for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I hope you and your families are well during this period. God bless.
Thank you. We're also joined this morning by Commissioner Mujica. Our next speaker is Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, followed by Councilmember Denique Miller. Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas. Our next speaker is Councilmember Denique Miller, followed by Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer. Councilmember Miller? Yes, please begin.
Okay, good morning, good morning, Lucille. Good morning, Chair Foy, to the members of the MTA Board and the MTA staff. I'm Councilmember Denique Miller, representing Southeast Queens, home to a large share of the MTA's workforce and unfortunately, an extreme transportation desert. Let me start off by thanking the efforts of the MTA's workforce during the COVID-19, and we will never forget the efforts and the sacrifice of the men and women of the MTA and particularly New York City Transit that has served us and made our lives so seamless during this pandemic, and many of them have made their ultimate sacrifice. As such, this Board's recent vote on the budget without major cuts to service and jobs is a step in the right directions. With the news last night of the $4 billion federal relief to the MTA with the Biden administration coming in, it has proven to be a wise step. If the MTA and our region are to recover and rebuild better and trend stronger, this must continue. We can never fully quantify the negative impacts of the cuts. And although last month's chairman did cite a study that attempted to do so, a 40% to 50% cut in service would translate to nearly a half million jobs that would be lost, $50 billion reducing earnings and reductions of $65 billion throughout the region. As we plan our recovery from the pandemic, it is clear that the MTA service is essential revitalization. The decisions made before us cannot be of a sliding scale. We can create a fiscally sound entity and also expand the service that we can generate new revenues. And then more, I'll jump and say finally, I urge the MTA to keep a cash payment option for single rides on local buses for many seniors and persons with disabilities, particularly in this transportation desert, rely on coin payment. There is no exasperated during the pandemic. The car sale vehicle was no longer available, and it's something that we need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. We've also been
Being carried around the house.
Yeah, because it's
We've also been joined by President Sarah Feinberg from New York City Transit. Our next speaker is Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, followed by Assembly Member Richard Gottfried.
Thank you very much to Chairman Foy and to the Board and to all the amazing workers and to you, Lucille Songhai. I am Gail Brewer and Manhattan Borough President, and I am concerned about any proposed fare hikes. I understand why, but I do not support them. I don't think riders should be paying more for less, and we all know what this COVID has done to our city. I know that the fare hikes are projected to fill around $153 million in 2021, and thank goodness, congratulations to you and to everyone in Washington for the $4.5 billion for the MTA. But you still will have a budget gap of 3.3 in 2022 and maybe $8 billion in 2024. And the only real ongoing solution is federal funding. It hurts mostly those who are lower-income workers, any increase. And if you do have to go ahead with some kind of increase, I have some suggestions. You should avoid raising the cost of the pay-per-ride fare, which so many low-income New Yorkers rely on. And there's also been talk of discontuing time-based cards, the metro card. This should be avoided since monthly and weekly cards are the core of the system's ridership. A proposal for peak and off-peak pricing like that on the commuter rail is long overdue. If off-peak tolls are significantly lower, they can incentivize drivers to commute during less traffic-heavy time periods. And that's what Sam Schwartz believes. We all love Sam Schwartz. Idea and congestion pricing are on hold by the Trump administration, but we want it to happen. And also with on-lease implementation going forward, the MTA should experiment with peak and off-peak pricing for its subways and buses. Because people have flexible schedules due to the pandemic, I think lowering off-peak fares might reduce overcrowding. Thank you very much to your attention to this testimony and congratulations on the $4.5 billion from the federal government.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Assembly Member Richard Gottfried, followed by Town Supervisor Howard Phillips.
Good morning. I'm Assembly Member Richard Gottfried. I represent the 75th Assembly District in Manhattan, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. The MTA's doomsday budget cuts were averted last week, but the trains and buses still face major service cuts and fare hikes unless the system gets considerable additional support. New York cannot recover from the pandemic and the recession if our transit network goes into a death spiral with rising fares, lost ridership, and devastating budget and service cuts. We should instead move quickly to require New York's wealthiest residents to pay higher taxes, and we must redouble our efforts in Washington for more funding and to remove the roadblocks to congestion pricing. The MTA faces an $8.5 billion budget gap through 2021. MTA riders already pay a higher percentage of the cost of the system than riders of any other major system. A fare hike will barely scratch the surface of the MTA's needs, but will be a real burden on people struggling to make ends meet. Fare hikes are self-defeating because they drive away riders and revenue. Raising the cost of a single fare ride would be especially harmful to low-income New Yorkers, and eliminating the monthly and weekly metro card would be a devastating impact on the transit system. Bringing back frequent users is critical to restoring ridership and revenue. I support raising bridge and tunnel tolls, particularly through congestion pricing. I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Town Supervisor Howard Phillips, followed by Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas.
To all the commissioners for this wonderful opportunity. First of all, let me say that coming from Rockland County and speaking on behalf of the supervisors' associations of the five towns, we sometimes feel as though we are the stepchild of the MTA and that the services that we need are not really reflective in the prices that we pay. But I understand you have an arduous task. You know, our subway system, our transportation system has been the envy of the world, and New York really was the envy of our nation. We need to get back to that. I know you have a very difficult task. This is unprecedented times with COVID-19. But somehow, some way, we were looking forward before all of this to having an expansion of services. So we need to get back to that. I know somebody's got to pay for it. It's great. I think your lobbying to get the $4.5 billion was wonderful, but I think that we need to take a real hard look. What was very discouraging, reading these articles in The Post about some of these employees with these outrageous overtimes being paid like that. Somehow, some way, that has to be, have a greater oversight, and that has to stop because that just throws more mud on the fact and lack of confidence in the MTA. But I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I just want to say, please, Rockland County is a vital part of the MTA. We need these services. Our residents need these services, and without them, we're just going to, we're going to go downhill in New York. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, followed by Isaac Goradetsky. Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas. Can you please unmute your microphone, Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas? Our next speaker is Isaac Goradetsky, followed by Assembly Member Michael Kuzick.
Good morning. I am Isaac Goradetsky. I'm the Staten Island Borough President, James Otto's Chief General Counsel and Director of Public Policy. I will be reading his testimony. Thank you, Chairman Foy, MTA Board members, MTA leadership. I'd also like to, on behalf of the Board President, acknowledge the hard work of the MTA workforce on the front lines. Following is his testimony. At this juncture, I must oppose the proposed changes to MTA fares, crossing charges, and related policies, specifically the portion of the proposal that would reduce or eliminate the discount Staten Island residents receive when crossing the Verrazano-Narrows Bridge. Let me begin by saying that I have a deep appreciation for the level of cooperation our borough has enjoyed with the MTA in the recent past, particularly on the complicated and far-reaching overhaul of the express bus system upon which Staten Island communities so heavily rely. Our mutual, our record of mutual respect and collaboration is longstanding, and I'm confident that will continue. I understand that there have been significant fiscal burdens caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and that fiscal constraints are unfortunately a necessary consequence if the MTA is to, and that fiscal constraints are unfortunately a necessary consequence if the MTA is to remain financially viable. However, I also recognize that it is important to avoid doing so in a way that would undercut the economic recovery of our borough. While sacrifices must be made by all New Yorkers, cutting the Staten Island resident discount would have a disproportionately negative impact on Staten Island by essentially isolating us from the rest of the city, hence isolating us from the recovery. By reducing the discount, you would further limit our residents' ability to commute in a financially viable way, hence negatively impacting our ability to recover from the COVID-19-related financial crisis. And with limited time, I will just thank you for your kind consideration, and the testimony has also been submitted in a written form.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Assembly Member Michael Kuzick, followed by Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas.
Hello, board members. Chairman Foy, good to see you all. This is my second go-around. I testified on the very first hearing on December 1st. I wanted to just amplify what many hundreds of Staten Islanders have already said. I want to also thank the MTA, the Board, for your service, and thank our frontline workers who have gotten many of my constituents and residents through this pandemic, and we appreciate their work. Board members, you've heard from hundreds of Staten Islanders. We are concerned about the fare and toll increases here in Staten Island and throughout the city because we commute to work every day. This, the elimination of the Verrazano Bridge discount and rebates would be devastating to the workers and the families here in Staten Island, particularly as we recover through this pandemic. Things that are different this year and going into next year just amplify how important this discount is. When we created the rebate back in 2014, the MTA, the governor, the legislature recognized toll was a burden on Staten Islanders, and we created a discount. And that's why it's important, as you move forward in these difficult times, to please remember what Staten Islanders go through out here and how important this discount is to us. And this is something that we really do need, and particularly now with the relief from Washington, it is my hope that this will not, the elimination of the discount will not be a part of the plan going forward. Thank you again for hearing me. Thank you again for hearing Staten Islanders. It's a pleasure to be here again with you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Assembly Member-elect Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, followed by Gabriel Nathans.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry about the issue before. Thank you for having me today. My name is Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, and I'm the Assembly Member-elect of District 34, which includes the neighborhoods of Jackson Heights, East Elm Hertz, Corona, and Woodside. The issue of public transportation is something very important to me. I've served for eight years as a Queens representative to the New York City Transit Riders Council and Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee. My district is home to many low-income and immigrant families who have been most devastated by the coronavirus pandemic. Residents of my district have lost their jobs, and many are not eligible for relief from the federal government. Each week, my neighbors wait in long lines for food to nourish their families and fear they will be evicted from their homes. Many residents of my district are also essential workers and rely on public transportation to get to work and feed their families. The median per capita income in my community is about $27,000 compared to the average New Yorker whose median capital income, capital income, is $39,000. 63% of residents in my community take public transportation to work. The new MTA budget plans for a 4% hike on these very same New Yorkers. It seems that Congress has reached a deal to provide the MTA with $4 billion in relief. I'm aware that the MTA requires more money to become financially stable, and when I assume office in January, I plan on advocating for just that by pushing for us to pass revenue-raising legislation including raising taxes on the ultra-rich. However, the burden of the system should not fall on our communities of color and low-income families. Today, I'm speaking out against the fare hike that is being proposed. Everyday New Yorkers should not have to pay a single cent more for the shortcomings of a capitalist system that disproportionately impacts our most vulnerable in our society. As an institution, the MTA is the lifeline that takes us forward to where we must go every single day, and this fare hike only takes New Yorkers backwards and inhibits the relief at a time the relief at a time where it's so desperately needed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriel Nathans, followed by Cara Ortiz.
Please note, there will be a brief transition as you are enabled to turn on your camera and microphone. Please make sure that once your screen updates, your camera and microphone are enabled and then begin your remarks. Our next speaker is Gabriel Nathans, followed by Cara Ortiz. Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Gabe Nathans. I'm a resident of Bedford-Stuyvesant. I love the MTA. I take it as much as I can. I think it's one of the best things about this city. But these new fare hikes, I think essentially amount to a regressive tax on the lowest-income New Yorkers and essential workers. And I just think that can't be the way forward. As has been mentioned, I think the federal money combined with increased taxes on the ultra-wealthy in New York is the only way to truly save and sustain the MTA. I think these, accepting these hikes amounts to accepting a version of the MTA that doesn't work for all of us and isn't what we want to invest in long-term. So I would encourage all of you to oppose the new fare increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cara Ortiz, followed by Francina Amparo.
Hi there, can you all hear me?
We can. Please begin.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Assembly Members on this call. I'm really happy you're all taking the time to be here and listen and I hope you've all stayed on to listen to New Yorkers. Look, this is very simple, as Mr. Nathan said right before me. This is aggressive tax on New Yorkers. Many New Yorkers can't even pay the fare now. You at the MTA know this. You're choosing to be willfully blind to this issue and move ahead with your fare increase despite that. It's unconscionable, it's immoral, and you're making this people of the city pay more for less. There's no reason for this. There's no reason this cost should fall on the working people of New York and especially that is the case given the fact that New York has the largest population of known billionaires in any city in this world. And if we need funds to fix this subway system, we should start taxing those billionaires that enjoy living in this city at the proper amount. And this is going to require taxing their wealth and that will require some of you to fight hard and expend some of your political capital and now is the time to spend it. Do the right thing. New Yorkers will thank you and will see your hard work and will see you standing up for them and will appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Francina Amparo, followed by Caitlin Billups.
Yes, good morning. I am former Dutchess County Legislature Francina Amparo, representing the Metro North Railroad Commuter Council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's fair hearing. Today's hearing comes as your quest for federal funding is finally becoming reality with the stimulus package that includes $4 billion for the MTA. Many thanks to Senator Schumer and all of our elected officials who helped make this happen. While it does solve all of the MTA's financial problems, while it does not solve all the MTA's financial problems, it will go a long way to stabilizing the MTA's fiscal situation through 2021. We are hopeful that additional funding will come through in the months ahead. In light of this latest news, we are doubling down on our call for no fare increases at this time. The MTA now has the funding it needs to hold on while many riders are still facing tumultuous times. We understand that the funding infusion means that the threat of dire cuts to Metro North services are off the table. We would like that commitment in writing. We need our train service to be there and be whole when we get to our next phase in our recovery. Paying up to 4.3% for more monthlies and 5.9% more for weeklies is a huge disincentive to getting back on board. Under other circumstances, we would support a nominal increase for other ticket types. However, these are not ordinary times. Many riders do not need to travel the same way and it may be years before they do again, if ever. Now is the time to increase ridership and ticketing that reflects the change in which we travel. We would support a discounted 20, 40, or 60 trip ticket with a longer expiration time to replace the traditional monthly. We would like to see off-peak fares retained until at least half of normal weekday ridership returns and we also recommend that you further incentivize off-peak travel by pursuing discounted pilot programs to accommodate commuters. Our future is starting to look brighter and it is critical that our transit system is there to support our regions and our riders next to normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Scalisi, followed by Mattie Balcom. Please unmute Mr. Scalisi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Please speak up louder.
Yes, can you hear me?
Barely, but we can.
Okay, good. My name is Steve Scalisi. I am a former retired private consultant who actually did a lot of work with MTA, New York City Transit. Kathy, you might remember my name from some of our work together on East Side Access, Pat Foy when you were at the Port Authority and I worked for STV. You, me, and Dominic's video had a number of conversations about LaGuardia Airport. I'm here today speaking as a pre-brIDGE Staten Island native and as I like to tell people these days, I was born here, I may not die here. Let me just say a quick little story that involved a project that worked with for MTA was the reconstruction of the streets right outside of Broadway of Brooklyn Junction. And I remember meeting with the local LBC president and he said to me, how did these streets get this way, full of glove sellers hawking their wares and hot dog vendors and police cars parked willy-nilly? And I said to him, little by little, one person shows up, two people show up, and then before you know it, everybody shows up and there's a total degradation of service. And I bring that up because here yet now is another case for Staten Islanders. If we lose this resident discount, it's just another factor in whether Staten Islanders are going to stay on Staten Island or relocate out of the state as we know what is happening. A lot of people going to Florida, a lot of people are going to Jersey. I'm faced with that decision right now. And this fair, the loss of the fair or the toll discount for Islanders is another piece of my calcio, personal calculus in terms of whether I stay, would we stay or go? So that's what I'm urging you to think about, these little factors adding up to the loss of-
Please conclude your remarks.
The loss of people living in this city and then the continued degradation of the quality of life. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mattie Balcom, followed by Sunny Lawrence.
My name is Mattie Balcom. My pronouns are they/them/theirs and I rise to speak in solidarity with those who have also dissented to the proposed fare hikes and eliminations presently before the Board. I'm sure countless others would also be here were they not working. I am a working-class New Yorker who depends upon the MTA for transportation to and from my minimum wage job, the sole source of income for me, as I will later today. Regardless of how numerically insignificant the fare hike may seem, I along with innumerable New Yorkers would see this proposed increase dramatically impact my monthly budget. I find it appalling and treacherous that at this time, a national recession, arguably a municipal depression, and a deadly global pandemic, we're the most vulnerable in our society and particularly the working class, are being forced between a rock and a hard place, choosing between rent and food on the table, that the MTA would seek to raise fares and eliminate unlimited MetroCards while tripling the price of a new MetroCard in the midst of considering service disruption. I understand, as do we all, the dire situation that we face as a result of this pandemic and governmental mismanagement, but raising the cost of four working New Yorkers while the Board continues to enjoy higher salaries, I must say is a bad look if ever I saw one. Should these changes go into effect, the working class of New York will see it for what it is, an abdication of concern for the livelihoods of average New Yorkers in the midst of a deadly pandemic where we have seen no support from the federal government since the summer and an abdication of leadership from local government. If the situation is so dire, take bold action without shirking the bill onto working-class New Yorkers. We must look at this problem politically. I am led to ask, why are we seeing more police in the MTA, many without masks? Why are we seeing the police budget go up? We must balance the budget without shirking responsibility for the working class. The cause of police abolition enables us to address the needs of our communities, not just in the realm of eliminating police terror. Chairman Pat Foy said, and I quote, "We are actually aware that lots of our neighbors in New York City are suffering. Then let your actions reflect that and work for those that are suffering instead of adding to their daily anxieties." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sunny Lawrence, followed by John Cho.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Sunny Lawrence and I have been an MTA customer for 21 years since I was four years old. Like many other New Yorkers, I have used the MTA daily to get to work and school and during the pandemic, I have been using it to get to my job as a teacher. I strongly oppose many of the proposed changes, including fare hikes and the elimination of unlimited MetroCards. These will pass the burden of budget deficits onto riders and make the MTA more inaccessible to those who need it the most, working people and low-income people. These policy changes will also disproportionately affect Black and Latino riders, making these changes an expression of systemic racism. I urge you to make sure that any proposed changes make the MTA more accessible and equitable, not less. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Cho, followed by Kathleen Collins.
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please begin.
Dear Chair Foy and Board Members of the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, I am testifying today as an active and longstanding resident of the Flushing community, an appointed member of County Board 7 in Queens, a Board Member of the Flushing Interfaith Council, and Executive Director of the Greater Flushing Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is a nonprofit membership association of small business owners, immigrant entrepreneurs, and civic leaders representing the most diverse and dynamic community in the United States. Unfortunately, our community is suffering amidst today's pandemic-driven economic crisis and we need your help. We expect most of our businesses, including our world-famous restaurant, to close by this winter. Even if only half the businesses close, that's an additional 30,000 New Yorkers who will lose their livelihoods and need emergency assistance for their families. Our local food pantry, which feeds 10,000 people in downtown Flushing every week, cannot accommodate more people. We need a radical plan to jumpstart our economy. During the pandemic, the MTA introduced a no-fare system for our buses to prevent the spread of COVID-19 and support our essential workers. We urge you to continue this policy and expand it to our subways. Other cities have already established a no-fare system successfully and we believe the MTA has capacity and the will to do this. It is the only way to revive our local economy and help our small businesses get back on their feet. I urge you, the MTA, to consider a no-fare policy for our public transit system. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Collins, followed by Marty Goodman. Please begin your remarks, Kathleen.
Am I okay? Okay, sorry. My name is Kathleen Collins and I'm a member of and a co-coordinator for Downstate New York Adapt, a grassroots community organization of people with disabilities advocating the rights, the civil rights of other, of all people with disabilities. First of all, we'd like to thank the transit workers and all the accessorized drivers who have done so much work during this pandemic. We really appreciate your hard work. We object today to any increase in the fares and tolls that people with disabilities will have to pay, especially since many people with disabilities live on very fixed incomes that have no room for additional expenses. We know that the proposed increase to the accessorized fare, for instance, may seem de minimis. At most, they're suggesting 25 cents, but this equals approximately a 9% increase in the fare for us. Those on Social Security and Social Security disability income in the coming year will receive only a 1.3% increase in their benefits payable in January of 2021. We ask, where will the populate, this population make up this difference? Thus, we, please, we do request that this accessorized fare does not be, is not increased, nor any fare or toll people with disabilities must pay to travel. Our other comments are set forth in our written comments that we previously submitted yesterday. Thank you for your time and again, thank you.
As a reminder, if you have joined the Zoom under a name that is not what you have registered to speak under, please identify yourself with the name used for registration in the Q&amp;A function. We've also been joined this morning by Commissioner Mahaltsis. Our next speaker will be Marty Goodman, followed by Felicia Puller. Our next speaker is Felicia Puller, followed by Steve Boriarty. Just as a reminder, there will be a brief transition to allow you to come into the Zoom. Our next speaker is Felicia Puller, followed by Bradley Brashiers. Our next speaker is Bradley Brashiers. Please unmute your microphone so that you can begin your public comment. Our next speaker is Bradley Brashiers.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Bradley Brashiers and I'm the Planning Manager for the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, PCAC. Over the last three weeks, dozens of elected officials and hundreds of riders across the MTA system, including from our three councils, have testified in opposition to fare hikes. I am here to echo that sentiment. In light of the news of a stimulus package that includes $4 billion for the MTA, we are doubling down on our call for no fare increases at this time. We know that in, that in any other cycle, it would be time to consider fare increases, but this year is different. Many riders don't need to travel the same way and it may be years before they do again, if ever. It isn't the time to give them an excuse to stay off trains and buses, but to encourage them to come back, incentivize, not penalize. On buses and subways, that means keeping the weekly and 30-day MetroCards to encourage more travel and support the regular users of the system. For commuter rail- it means pursuing discounted pilot programs like Atlantic Ticket Expansion or other studies to help commuters. Now is the time for creative thinking and ticketing that reflects the changing way we travel. We would support a discounted 20, 40, or 60-trip ticket with a longer expiration time, six months or a year, to replace the traditional monthly. We do not support the proposal for a flat fare. What would benefit riders from ONTOK would hurt those from Niola. Similarly, it's a much longer trip from Grand Central to Brewster than Bronxville, and we don't believe it should cost the same. Know that the budget you passed last week includes a 4% yield fare increase. We urge you to reverse that and look at alternative ways to balance the budget and hold riders harmless, including a higher increase for tolls. The infusion of federal funding should help ward the devastating service cuts we all feared off, but so too should it ward off fare increases. In any other year, we'd reluctantly support the biannual fare increase with a caveat of no cuts to service. But it is not a typical time, and there should not be a typical approach to filling the budget hole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Ring, followed by Joan Martinez. Just as a reminder, there will be a brief transition as you are enabled to turn on your camera and microphone. Please make sure that once your screen updates, your camera and microphone are enabled, and then you can begin your remarks. Additionally, as a reminder, if you have joined the Zoom under a name that is not what you registered to speak under, please identify yourself with the name used for registration in the Q&amp;A function. Our next speaker is Michael Ring, followed by Joan Martinez. Mr. Ring, please begin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Michael Ring. I am with the Downstate Chapter of New York Adapt and the, um, hi, my name is Michael Ring. I'm with the Downstate Chapter of Adapt and New York City Chapter of Disabled Men. I'd like to protest the elimination of the walk-up reduced fare. That will affect people with disabilities and for people who are citizens. Not everyone uses the subway or the buses often enough to get a card in advance. And some people use the subway possibly once a year or less. And there are tourists who come to New York who might want to use mass transit, and they will not have time to register in advance as people with disabilities. The amount of money that would be saved is negligible at all. And requiring people to go through what for some is a confusing and cumbersome process to register as people with disabilities is unfair. You save by doing this. So that's, that's the end of what I have to say, and I hope you allow people with disabilities to get a discount on the subway and buses without registering in advance if they need to. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joan Martinez, followed by Janice Bartley.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Joan Martinez. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. As a New York City public school teacher, I see the MTA bleeding money every single day. I want to talk about a quick problem, a solution, a note, and a question for you. The problem is that every student must be issued a student MetroCard regardless of their attendance. It's a mandate that we cannot refuse them services. So they can spend less than a day in school and so show, just show their face, and we're unable to deactivate their card. Students and parents know this very last day before it's cut off, and they play that game. Income does not matter. Virtual learning does not require a MetroCard, and they should be deactivated during this time. They constantly lose their cards, and they're issued new ones. Meanwhile, they give them to their parents, their friends, or they sell them as swipes. Nobody's stopping this. Here's my solution. It's a win-win. Only issue weekly cards to the school system. Encourage attendance, because across the school system, the attendance is approximately 22% now. But everyone still has their MetroCards, and they're using them. Please stop raising the fares for middle-class employees such as myself, who happen to be Caucasian and pay because it's the right thing to do. Please note, before the pandemic, countless people just asked for a swipe or board the buses for free every single morning and afternoon that I traveled. Person after person asked, can I get a ride? Can you open the gate? Can you give me a swipe? They were jumping turnstiles. They're wearing fancy sneakers and jewelry that I cannot afford. On crowded buses, people just board the back without paying, and they take the seats that this injured 51-year-old needs. Too often, young women with children take up the elderly and differently-abled seats in the front. Since when are the young favored over the old? There is never any enforcement. And just like when you ask somebody to wear a mask over their nose or stop yelling or cursing.
Please conclude your remarks.
You can literally get stabbed or shot. My last point is where are New York--
Please conclude your remarks.
Okay, I'm a lifelong New Yorker and--
Please conclude your remarks. Thank you. Our next speaker is Janice Bartley, followed by Vladimir Aronov. Janice Bartley? Our next speaker is Vladimir Aronov, followed by Brian Fritsch.
Hello?
Hi, good morning, please begin.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vladimir Aronov, and I'm a Staten Islander, and I'm a former MT employee. I'm here today to share with you my two thoughts. First, I believe that elimination of Staten Island Discount Program is not going to help MTA. I know Staten Islanders want to fight that proposal. And I know that we will win, as we did at the first place. So that proposal is not going to help, is not going to have a long life. The second thoughts, it's kind of unfortunate, but we all know with the COVID, the life changed. And I know that a lot of white-collar people are working from home in virtual office. And it's not going to go back. The ridership is not going to go back. I see a lot of electrical scooters on the street. I see a lot of electrical boards, and the people use electrical bikes to go to work. So unfortunately, but I think, and I, I know you know that, but MTA has to rethink the strategy, how to deal with the budget. That's all. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you will do the right thing and succeed, because we all need MTA. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Fritsch, followed by Kathleen Sforza.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Brian Fritsch, and I'm the manager of advocacy campaigns for Regional Plan Association. First, we must acknowledge how essential federal support is for the New York City region to recover from the pandemic. We are especially appreciative of Senator Schumer's efforts to include transit in the continuing resolution that is set to be finalized today. The approximately $4 billion that is set to be included in the bill is both crucial and necessary to avoid the drastic service cuts that have been outlined in numerous board meetings prior to today. Public transportation is integral to the continued success of New York City in a way that is unparalleled to other major American cities. The MTA must have an additional $8 billion from the federal government over the foreseeable future to power the national economy. Although we recognize the difficulty of fare increases during such an immensely difficult time for many in the New York City region, RPA has long supported smaller, more regular fare increases as opposed to larger one-time increases. This consistency is, is critical for both budget planning and riders' expectations. We're also very supportive of increasing tolls on automobiles at a higher rate than increasing fares for transit riders. Since the onset of the pandemic, we have seen driving return to pre-pandemic levels at a far faster rate than subway and bus ridership, even though it has become clear that transit is not responsible, responsible for transmitting COVID-19. When the pandemic ends in this coming year, it is crucial that we encourage those who are able to return to public transit to make our city streets safer and less congested, to reduce pollution and carbon emissions. We have also long advocated for variable tolling at MTA crossings, as well as variable tolls for the MTA's congestion pricing, congestion pricing program, which we are pleased to see may be finally on the horizon.
Please conclude your remarks.
Variable tolling by size and vehicle, day of the week and time of day, has added benefits for reducing congestion into the central business district. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Sforza, followed by Michelle Alyssa.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, please begin.
Okay, okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Kathleen Sforza, and I'm a lifelong Staten Island resident. Thank you for letting me testify today. Last night, I had prepared a speech to give today. This morning, I turned on New York One, and Pat Kiernan was reporting about the COVID-19 federal stimulus package proposed by Congress. And lo and behold, the MTA for fiscal, fiscal year 2021 will be receiving approximately $4 billion plus in the deal. So my speech needed to be modified. Part of it is still apropos, so I will read it. I find it appalling that once again Staten Island residents are not getting their fair share when it comes to transportation options. The MTA is threatening to eliminate the all-important resident discount for the Verrazano Bridge. The holidays of Christmas, Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa are upon us. How apropos is it that a session such as this, that is so important, is being held on December 21st at 10:00 a.m.? But it looks as though the MTA was visited from the ghost of Christmas future, the federal government, and will be, will probably be receiving the $4 billion plus in federal stimulus. Now, the right thing to do would be for the MTA to keep its Staten Island resident discount for the many first responders and essential workers who call Staten Island their home and who have been serving their community throughout this pandemic. Let today's tale be one of redemption for the MTA. Upon closing, I would like to thank all the MT work, MTA workers who have served us during this pandemic, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Alysska, followed by Regina Palau.
Good morning. Raising MTA fares and tolls are a direct attack on New York essential workers, particularly the low-income workers. Transportation costs make up a large percentage of their total earnings. I'm a school nurse from Staten Island. I do not have an option to work from home. I'm also a single mother, so I don't have an option to have, to get COVID either. I have to cross the bridge every day now. I refuse to take public transportation. I would like, uh, the option to walk across the bridge or to take the bus if they're going to raise the fares. We need to maintain our resident discount. I, I can't afford it. My income has been lowered. It will break my budget. Why does the MTA have to be a cash cow for New York anyway? It's just the way they've been doing it here. Other cities can tax big business employers, make transportation free. There should be a policy for free green lanes, an option for people to bike or walk across every crossing we have in New York City. You know, would, will there be a reversal i-if you guys get the money from the federal government that you're supposed to get? No, the fares always go up. The only one we had was the resident discount for Staten Islanders. It was needed, and we need it even more so. Transportation costs should be completely subsidized for workers. We are not expendable or voiceless. Tax the rich to fill your budget gaps. Free green lanes for--
Our next speaker is Regina Palau, followed by Paul Spurling.
Good morning.
Good morning, please begin.
Thank you. I want to encourage you to maintain the Staten Island resident discount on the Verrazano Bridge. In fact, I think it should be made a forever thing and should not come into your budget considerations at all. We really have very few opportunities for getting across the water into Manhattan, into Queens. I moved here from Queens, and all of my family and friends now live either in Queens or Long Island. There have been times in my life where I did not attend events with them because I could not afford the toll and the gas. There's other times when I've had money, when I was working a good job. But you see, it, it's quite expensive, even as it is. And maybe six bucks is nothing to you, but it can be a lot to people like me, who are now on a fixed income. I've heard a lot of other speakers today talking about the idea of you getting creative, and I think you're going to have to face that fact and come into a new century and a new understanding of public transportation. I also agree that it should be free, but I know it's not going to get there anytime soon. But I've traveled around the world, and I've been in towns and cities and countries much poorer than ours and didn't have to walk more than a block or two to access small minivans that took me to a hub where I got on a larger bus that took me to another transportation hub. And I don't know why we're not doing that. I don't know why huge buses have to run on every single route. So that's just one idea. I want to encourage you to think outside the box, like we have to with our little meager home budgets. Thank you very much. Do the right thing. New Yorkers need you right for the time.
Our next speaker is Paul Spurling, followed by Daniel Harris.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, please begin.
What you are doing to Staten Islanders is an absolute travesty. We have one of the longest commutes in the country and one of the most expensive commutes in the country. Other boroughs get a $2.75 ride or a free bridge. Staten Islanders are stuck on an expensive express bus or with an expensive, expensive Verrazano toll, not to mention gas and parking. Staten Islanders cannot afford another penny. I am sorry to say this, but the MTA is a very poorly-run agency. Theft and graft are happening daily at the MTA. If you need money, you need to look internally. The agency has no organizational chart detailing what each of its 70,000 employees do or who they even report to. The Transit Authority President Sarah Feinberg said, and I quote, "There are people who do not work here who we are paying." She continues, "It's crazy. I absolutely believe there are a lot of people wandering around, and no one knows who they report to." report to," end quote. And if you ride the subway, you could see it in person. You will see MTA workers meandering around, seemingly without a cause or a care. So before you try to balance the budget on the backs of Staten Islanders, you need to look internally for that money. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Harris, followed by Sarah Sitzler. Daniel Harris?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Committee. Thank you for hearing me this morning. My name is Dan Harris. I am 55 years old and have been a lifelong Staten Islander. I travel to Brooklyn on a regular basis, and taking away the Staten Island discount will critically hurt myself as well as all Staten Islanders. It will become unaffordable for me to travel. My wife also takes the express bus, and with the increase on that, the 123% increase will be a large hit on us financially. I also have relatives-in-laws that are elderly and in Brooklyn that we also need to visit. So we frequent the Verrazano Bridge numerous times. And again, the increase would be astronomically, financially will hurt us. So I ask you to leave the discount in place, please, and I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Sarah Sitzler, followed by Felicia Park Rogers. Sarah Sitzler?
Hi, good morning. Sorry about that. My name is Sarah Sitzler. I am a resident of Flatbush, Brooklyn, and I'm just speaking today also in opposition of any proposed fare hikes for the MTA riders. As Chairman Foye stated, this is not a standard budgetary proposal, yet when you start to talk about fare increases, it reads as such. And right now, we are living in a pandemic. We're living without a stimulus, without any real plan for rent relief or mortgage relief, and now the transit system is turning to us to help dig them out of this enormous financial burden that, as we all know, has been accumulating debt for years, well even before this pandemic started. This is disturbing to me that the MTA is even considering raising fares for riders, when most of these riders, as so many people have mentioned, are essential workers who are risking the health of themselves and their families just trying to maintain and stay afloat. Most of these essential workers are low-income, are people of color, and those are the same communities who've already been disproportionately affected by this pandemic. I would strongly suggest that you continue to seek assistance from federal sources, whether that is additional loans or subsidies, or better yet, you could use your political capital to get behind legislation that will tax the ultra-rich, who have not only been doing well, but have been thriving in this pandemic, as so many of us are suffering. The MTA budget troubles cannot be the burden of riders and working-class people, so you need to seek elsewhere for your funds. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Felicia Park Rogers, followed by Frank Sacco.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you, please begin.
Terrific.
Felicia Park Rogers. Our next speaker is Frank Sacco, followed by Alita Dupree.
I'll start video, okay?
Hi.
Hi.
We can see it, hear you.
Hi, good morning. I'm one of the essential workers that lives on Stranded Island, also known as Staten Island. I believe the MTA could do more with less by using the technology with the tolls and the MTA bus and train apps to help riders, even if the bus frequency is less. We can't pay customers paying more and getting less. One of the things we did lose on the bridges was we had officers on the TriBar Bridge and Tunnel, which would assist in stopping drunk drivers and crazy drivers, erratic drivers at the tolls. Now, the electronic tolls, we can't do that anymore, so we lost that. Many won't be able to afford commuting with the fare increases, and the Staten Island resident elimination would be devastating. I believe you would have a mass exodus, more than what the average percent is currently now of Staten Islanders leaving the city or state. The biennial review, we constantly getting every two years of toll increases and fares and busting on tolls. Many essential workers can't work from home. We have losses due to COVID. The monetary losses that the MTA suffered were due to the COVID, and the federal aid should cover that, and the remaining balance, the MTA would need to look internally to make that up. The percentage of increase for Staten Island residents with the toll resident discount and any elimination or plan change would be devastating. I'll wrap it up. Do the Staten Islanders get, do we get to vote on these proposed changes? I don't think so. And the transportation cost with vehicle maintenance and insurance and tolls is another form of taxation that Staten Islanders can't afford. And it's apropos that December 1, split tolling took effect, but now we're talking about increases in Staten Island resident plan elimination. I conclude.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alita Dupree, followed by Yuki Endo.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Alita, please begin.
Thank you, Board Chair Pat Foy and members, Alita Dupree, for the record. My pronouns are she and her. It's good to be back with you again. I'm going to talk about some different things today. I am simply an ordinary user of transportation, and I come as an independent voice. Change is inevitable. We can change, but we can get caught in the current. I am interested in your proposal for the three zones for the railroads. I'm kind of in the neutral on it. I'm intrigued. I know SEPTA has only four zones, Caltrain has six, while BART and Washington Metro have a point-to-point fare system, which is you pay with a card. In the Bay Area, it's called Clipper. So I'd like to hear what you have to say about the three-zone fare system. Certainly, I'd advocate eliminating the complicated peak and off-peak fares, especially when it comes to going in and out of Manhattan, Penn Station, Grand Central Terminal. And I think that we do need to simplify our fare collection. I think the time is ripe to get to eliminate coinage and bills on the buses. Omni is coming. London has a cashless bus system, and they're doing fine with it, and the sky hasn't fallen. And London is a city much like New York. So we have to think forward, not backward. I have a contactless card, and I have a no-fee checking account through a credit union with no minimum balance. Credit unions and banks across the country stand ready to offer these no-cost banking products to people of modest means like myself. And again, variable tolls is important, and let's help people get EZ Passes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yuki Endo, followed by Christopher Greif. Please begin, Yuki.
I am grateful that the New York City system will not pick up, however, I am honored that the service car, because nearly, not spent would be due on the name line, are turned nice, nice bus numbers also upset until fair hike. I also oppose the further proposal on the road, and they don't let us, because it does not make anything for the people in NASA, which is you can do, which are closer to New York City to pay no wifi that you get cheaper. That's the debate program for the coastbank bridge should not be, you know, because it's a longer drive from dockless to pro channel via Nascar. I also oppose listening debate for the Verrazano nodos, because it's not expensive, which in anti-state, anti-system, as then adding is nearly express bus and car adding, where people drive cars, take Uber, Lyft, or express bus. As then adding, and neither of the non-residents are the only one being discriminated by anti, by you know, being listening, debate on the Verrazano nodos, and calling the non-resident auto service, because it's nearly being declined, despite any project. I am arguing all anti-bought number to take the wifi coach pass to Washington DC to ask for a latency cover, because it's on the front, to care about subway buses trying moving. I don't agree with the guest talks, but I agree with the billion dollar talks. I thank you for your cooperation.
Our next speaker is Christopher Greif, followed by Andy Pollak.
I'm here. Good morning, MTA Board members, Pat Foy, and all presidents of MTA. I'm here to talk about one very clearness. We see, we're worrying about taking away the 30-day and the seven-day pass, but we always talk about the gold MetroCard, but we're forgetting about one thing, the reduced fare MetroCard. A reduced fare MetroCard that people with disabilities who are between high function, medium function, who do use it to travel on the bus, the subway, and Long Island Railroad Metro North. Yes, but the reduced fee doesn't mean it doesn't work, but it's approved as showing an ID of this card. Without this monthly or seven-day, it's going to hurt our families, our disability, our people with disability, especially our seniors. So I remind everyone, including our elected officials, thank you for talking about the 30-day and the seven-day pass, but let's remind ourselves, reduced fare MetroCard, 30-day and 70-day pass, does help people with social security disability, as my fellow advocates have said, but we do need this to stay where it is so we can travel easily, safely, and God forbid, if, say, an elevator's out, the monthly can cover it. We don't have to always get a block transfer. Thank you, everyone, and happy holidays.
Our next speaker is Andy Pollak, followed by Chris Coppa.
Thank you, Lucille. Well, I am back, and I have my camera on, so that's good. So let me make things very clear here. I am in complete agreement with the other people who have been very vocal about not eliminating the Staten Island discount, because I have family who live on the west shore of Staten Island, and they heavily rely on that discount when they need to take the Verrazano going into Brooklyn. So please do not eliminate that. Also, please do not raise any tolls on the bridges, because my dad is a regular user of the Throggs Neck Bridge, and if you're going to raise his EZ Pass toll to $6.41 or $6.70, that's not good for us, because we use that bridge a lot whenever we need to go into New Jersey. So please do not raise tolls. Please do not raise any fares, because the last thing anybody needs during this pandemic is to see their fares go up during this crisis. Also, I want to be very clear about the flat fare. I'm looking at this flat fare. I am outraged by it, because residents of Nassau County are going to get double-crossed going to zone fare four. Basically, what's going on here is, and I'm looking at this math, you're basically charging more for people to go from Manhattan into zone fare four. I will see a benefit if I'm staying in zone fare three, which is my zone, where I go to Orban Dale in Jamaica. But what about zone fare four and zone fare seven, where Nassau County is? The other zone fares will see a benefit. So again, I'm going to be very clear. No fare hikes, no toll hikes. Do not eliminate the Staten Island resident discount, but I am in agreement with the single ticket, because Omni is coming. Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday.
Our next speaker is Chris Coppa, followed by Charlton De Souza. Chris Coppa? Please unmute your microphone, Chris Coppa, if you would like to speak. Chris Coppa?
Yeah, hello. I'd like to find out why the broad-channel toll is so little. People pay $1.41 for the broad-channel, broad-channel bridge, and then they get that money back with their EZ Pass, so they don't actually pay anything. And Staten Islanders pay more than $6, $6.40 something every time, and we don't get that money back. So I think that the tolls should are actually targeting Staten Islanders heavily, and that needs to be changed. Getting the same type of discount that people in far Rockaways get. Not talking about forgetting about our toll. We should get it evened out. This is terribly unfair to Staten Islanders.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlton De Souza, followed by Jason Anthony.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, please begin.
Okay, my name is Charlton De Souza. I'm the president of Passengers United, and I am against any cuts on the Long Island Railroad, especially on the Port Washington branch, where you'll want to cut weekend service and you'll want to have it run hourly. That is a bad idea. You know what the MT should eliminate? All the flyers on the Babylon branch, okay? And as far as the subway is concerned, now that you guys have the $4 billion bailout that y'all got yesterday, here's what people need, passengers need. If you're asking people to pay more, people need safe subways. They shouldn't be riding the subways, and then they're being harassed by mentally ill homeless people on the subways. The trains are getting dirty again. Every day, we're getting reports of trains being taken out of service because the homeless are defecating on the seats. This is a danger to the MT employees, especially with COVID-19, and it seems like the MT has not learned its lesson. So if you want your passengers to come back, we need clean trains. And you know what? The cleaning program that y'all have is working, but if a homeless person comes on the trains and they're messing it up, no one wants to come down there. They don't want to be harassed. They don't want to be robbed. So the MT police, we do need security, and I feel unlike Riders Alliance, that once the subway is open between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., we at Passengers United support the MT in keeping the subways closed between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. I think that's the best thing the MT ever did. And you know what? I live in southeast Queens. If I have to take four buses If I have to take four buses overnight to get home, I will do that. Rather than be on a dangerous subway train, uh you know, putting the health and danger of MT employees um you know, in danger. So yeah, we support subway closure. Thank you. Have a
Our next speaker is Jason Anthony, followed by Gabriel Reichler. Jason Anthony? Please unmute your camera and microphone and begin your remarks.
Uh yes, good morning, Jason Anthony, Vice President of Passengers United. I'm coming here again to speak because it is unacceptable that passengers like myself that are essential workers have to pay more to get less. Those like myself that have uh contacts in Staten Island, we have to pay more under the flat fares proposal to get to Nassau County or to Westchester. But what if we go, for instance, to Suffolk County or to Perkipsi? Then we pay less. I ride the subway now maybe twice a week. Over it. It's disgusting. It is disgraceful that the tracks look so abandoned that the track street program is got abandoned. I don't know for what reason. Another thing, transit employees are getting assaulted left and right. Transit employees are getting sick of COVID, left and right. It's not fair for riders like myself have to pay more and transit employees are getting sick and risking their lives to provide rights to my, like myself and my fellow riders. So no fair, no fair increase pass a gas tax jet, uh tax jet vessels and tax billionaires. That's all to say thank you.
Our next speaker is Gabriel Reichler, followed by Mike Steinfeld. Gabriel?
Morning. My name is Gabriel Reichler. I am 22 years old. I was born here and have lived within the five boroughs basically my entire life. My parents were born here as well and their parents grew up here. I am a multi, multiply disabled person and I'm currently a college student. I've relied on the MTA most of my life to get to school, medical appointments, work, and basically everything else. I have lived through fare hike after fare hike and service cut after service cut, as well as general declines in our transit system and other critical components of our society's infrastructure. While I have certainly been adversely impacted by all that, as someone who is relatively privileged, I have gotten through it reasonably well for the most part. Unlike most of my neighbors who are from more oppressed communities that have truly been hard hit by the decisions of small groups of very powerful people, such as those I am addressing now. This goes back to the one and only legitimate purpose of transit fares, to give the fascist murderers of our police forces another excuse to feed even more black and brown bodies to our racist, deadly, for-profit prison industrial complex. We may pride ourselves on not having segregated our transit as many places in the South did, but we have had active decisions to undermine the transit that is most necessary to our most oppressed communities and to fill it with police egged on by the enabling force of fare hikes. Having studied economics, I understand what should be quite obvious to everyone. If you eliminate a big waste of resources that contributes absolutely nothing to society, you can use the savings to pay for a lot. There are many such examples of such waste in our society, but the fare system is one of the most egregious. And eliminating it will be one of the easiest ways to help pay for improvements to service and infrastructure. It's a low hanging fruit. The only downside is that it becomes a little bit harder to reinforce white supremacist hierarchies. But I think most of us at this parliament in this city would actually consider that an add benefit, not a downside. For, for most of the past years since we started changing aspects of our daily lives in response to this pandemic, one of the changes I have made is refusing to pay fares when riding MTA services, which I already been doing sometimes for quite a while. Given my privilege, I have gotten away with it. But if my skin were a little bit darker, I probably would have died long ago on Rikers Island. My demand remains the same. Instead of raising fares or cutting service, the MTA must abolish all of its fares and police and use the savings from both of these changes to maintain and improve.
Please conclude your remarks.
Especially targeting the most oppressed communities in
Please conclude your remarks. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Steinfeld.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Please begin your remarks.
Thank you. Sorry about the delay. Listen, I am Mike Steinfeld and I'm a resident Staten Islander for many over 45 years. And I'm a merchant service provider and you must know what that is. We travel around, visit different businesses and to try to get new business. Constantly uh the Verazano Bridge is used to go to the other boroughs to try to uh have some business opportunities. But in that field that we're in, we've lost probably about 60% of our businesses. And so that has taken a toll on our financial status here. My wife is a essential worker, travels to Manhattan many, several times a week, meaning that's an hour and a half, two hour commute, the Staten Island Railroad, the ferry and two trains in Manhattan. And she's up at 5 o'clock in the morning to try to make that commute to get in. Now, I don't know if any of you are on the subway at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, but this is what the subway looks like on the 4 train at 5:30 in the morning. People are not very well protected or in various states of protection. She's hesitant about even going in that way. So now she starts to drive. With the BQE being the way it is, the toll that you're proposing to increase off the residents here, it's unfair. The BQE is a mess. She ends up taking the time to get to Manhattan. It's unfair. It's almost criminal. Look internally at your own staff and what they're making and who's monitoring who, your contracts. You guys are out of control there. Please take care about that. Maybe you can re uh energize your income. But the COVID has played a part and we understand that. But it's not residents of Staten Island's fault to pay that price. Thank you.
The time is now 11:40 a.m. At this time, we will be taking a brief break and will resume at 11:50. During the break, please feel free to take the voluntary survey, which will be visible on your screen, to assist us in understanding the effectiveness of our outreach for these hearings. When we resume, I will call through the remaining list of registered speakers who have either not joined us or have had technical difficulties. After concluding the second reading, the hearing will conclude at 11:55 a.m. if we have no further registered speakers present. Again, if you are registered to speak this, this morning but haven't heard your name called, please provide the name you registered under in the Q and A function during the break and we will add your name to the queue. Thank you.
Thank you.
The time is now eleven fifty AM and we will now resume the hearing. As I mentioned before the break, we have several speakers registered for this morning's hearing who have either not joined us or were having technical difficulties. I will call through the remaining speakers now. As a reminder, if you joined the Zoom under a different name than you registered to speak under or you were registered and haven't heard your name called, please indicate in the Q and A function now. Our next speaker is Zilly Yao. Our next speaker is Michael Recupero. Our next speaker is Iran Moye. Our next speaker is Andy Kito. Our next speaker is Kay Holmes. Our next speaker is Denise Mason. Our next speaker is John McFarland. Our next speaker is Caroline Chaplin. Our next speaker is Aaron Schlesinger. Our next speaker is Alexandre Resautfit. Our next speaker is Kathleen Harris. Our next speaker is Miriam Carium. Our next speaker is Caitlin Billups. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Wood. Our next speaker is Jimmy Chu. Our next speaker is Marilyn Tucci. Our next speaker is Marty Goodman. Marty? Marty Goodman? Please unmute your microphone and begin your comments. Our next speaker is Marty Goodman.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Goodman. Please begin.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Technical problems. My name is Marty Goodman. Uh, I'm retired station agent and former member of the TW Local One Hundred Executive Board for nine years. I remember, uh, the two thousand and ten layoffs that were brought about, so said the MTA because of a budget deficit. Nine hundred and fifty, uh, transit workers were laid off, crushing them financially and and morale wise. Uh, it was a horrible time. I helped organize demonstrations against the layoffs and, uh, the reason for the layoffs was cited as a financial crisis, uh, which there was at the time for the ruling class, I would say. Uh, the same body of folks who are running the MTA as a cash cow for Wall Street. Um, that has not changed. And at that time, it would have been, uh, very prudent to have a strike against the layoffs and bring the MTA to its knees, bring back, uh, the the laid off transit workers and restore some justice to the MTA and the transit authorities, the so-called public service. Uh, I say now, as I said then, that I don't trust the MTA. Uh, it will still have enormous financial burdens. Most of the money going to the ultra rich, ultra rich and a grab bag of servants. I say no cuts, no layoffs, no fare increases and strike at any layoffs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Felicia Poehler. Our next speaker is Joshua Clennan. Our next speaker is Vanessa Canales. Our next speaker is Charlene Frazier. Our next speaker is Steve Boriarty.
Hi, Steve here.
Hi, we can hear you. Please begin.
Thank you. Uh, I'll be shortened to the point. Uh, my my questions or points relate to accountability. Uh, we all know that the pandemic is eventually going to end. Uh, medical authorities, Dr. Fossey, whoever, we know at some point it's going to be over and there will be somewhat of a return to normal. Um, so if there are any changes in services, fares or anything, uh, it seems to me that the MTA should be accountable and commit to paper, on paper, when they're going to uh, lift these changes to services and fares relative to when the pandemic is over. And that could simply be arrived at by when the mask order is rescinded. How many months after that do we lift these extraordinary measures? Because obviously, uh, a fare or service change comes into effect and remains permanent. That's point number one. Point number two is the Omni. Uh, I'd be curious to know if the Omni is, uh, the reason there was this push to get rid of MTA cards and push everybody onto Omni has to do with selling of geolocation data of the Omni app to marketers. If that is the case, then the MTA is making revenue from that. And if that is the case, again, accountability, is there somewhere clearly stated what the projected revenues are and how it comes into effect? That's all I have to say and thank you very much for making my points about accountability.
Our next speaker is Michael Janetti. Our next speaker is Richard Jacobson. Our next speaker is Christina Messina. Our next speaker is Ella Bragano. Our next speaker is Ivanka Kulshitsky. Our next speaker is Shakira Green. Our next speaker is Omar Vera. Our next speaker is Felicia Park Rogers.
Hi, good morning. I think my Zoom is ready for vacation. Thank you for bringing me back on. I'm Felicia Park Rogers, Director of Regional Infrastructure Projects for Tri-State Transportation Campaign. In these unprecedented times, the board is facing an impossible set of choices between worse and even more worse as you confront the incomprehensible budget gap left in the wake of significantly reduced revenue. We are gratified that Congress looks likely to include more than four billion in relief for the MTA, but we realize this is just a start and will continue to press for further support. Even as the system is facing tremendous crisis, we ask the board to please delay the implementation of previously scheduled fare hikes due to be enacted in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Raising fares at this time in combination with deep service cuts will set the MTA on a downward spiral of lower ridership, further reduced fare box revenue, slowing our region's economic recovery and putting tremendous stress on our region's most vulnerable residents, as well as having a disproportionately negative impact on black and brown commuters and essential and frontline workers who heavily depend on public transit. As currently proposed, the fare increase would raise approximately one hundred and forty-eight million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. In normal times, this would be a helpful amount of revenue, but in the face of an estimated budget gap of six billion dollars, fare increases at this time will barely help the yawning deficit and instead will terribly impact the people who need the transit system the most. For this reason, we also ask the MTA board to not raise single-use fares and to keep the seven-day and thirty-day passes as they are. We strongly support your proposals to raise tolls and implement variable price tolling as a means of raising funds as well as discouraging car congestion. More cars on the roads will have many damaging consequences, paralyzing traffic congestion, increasing greenhouse gas emissions and toxic pollutants, and more traffic-related deaths. Thank you for your leadership during these incredibly difficult times.
Our next speaker is Janet Bartley, followed by Susan Conlin. Janice, please unmute your microphone and begin your remarks. Our next speaker is Susan Conlin.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please begin.
Hi, this is Susan Conlin. I'll be short and sweet. I lived in Staten Island my whole life and I am, uh, I'd like to just uh, ask you to continue to include the Staten Island toll discount that our residents receive. We are, um, we, this is the only way that Staten Island people have to get uh, off of Staten Island. None of the other boroughs have, um, are, are, uh, they all have, uh, free venues in which to get, uh, to come and go. Staten Island is the only place that has to pay a toll, uh, either the, um, to New Jersey or to, um, Brooklyn. And, uh, to take that away is an undue burden and balancing the budget on the backs of hardworking Staten Island people. It is an ill-thought plan and I am here to ask you to continue to have that discount toll for Staten Island people included. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us this morning. The time is currently twelve oh three PM. This concludes the eighth and final virtual fare and toll hearings. As a reminder, in addition to the virtual hearings, there have been several other ways you can provide comments, ask questions, or make requests throughout this process. Please note that the comment period closes today, December twenty first, twenty twenty. If you are planning to comment today, we encourage the public to comment via the fare and toll hearing website, or call the public hearing hotline at six four six two five two six seven seven seven. As usual, telephone agents are available until ten PM today. Thank you so much.